Me call R five oh three. What do you need?
Ten.
Oh, I thought you wanted me to do this.
No.
Unless you want to do it.
No. He's just there. You have the new minutes, okay. For information, this is a public meeting being a video and audio recorder for cable broadcast and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov. Everybody would please stand and join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. No, well, we do have public, but you're on our agenda and you are to sell. Uh, nobody, nobody for public input. And then number five, new business. Review, discuss and act the draft regulations for increase of the smoking age to twenty-one years.
Okay.
And with this is, uh... Which one? This? No, that's not the new regulations.
I wrote them on, I don't have them.
Okay. Marilla Medge.
Did she send them to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Probably in a folder.
I'm working on it.
All right, so a couple of things. So, uh, in the regulation on page three is our two things is the updated definition, all the definitions and the whereas parts on the first few pages are now, um, up to the level of state law and what we use as a, um, border health sample. Okay, so that that's the first thing, the definitions. And then on page three, section D is where it brings the age up to twenty-one. Now, on page...
Five.
Five. Cheryl had left in this prohibition of blunt wraps. And it, I don't, it's not in your last regulation from two thousand thirteen. So, what I emailed her was that I know it's in there, I believe it's an error, and if you want to take it out, we'll take it out for the public hearing. So we'll get another, we'll get a clean copy, you'll have a clean copy to sign, and this will be removed. But I just need to make sure that that's what you want.
Only question I was thinking about this today, blunt wraps are made of tobacco, correct?
Yes.
And that's why they're, is that the only reason they may be prohibited? Could we add maybe to no person or any shall sell or distribute blunt wraps in Dayton to anyone under age twenty-one?
No, because it's a tobacco product, so it would automatically be twenty-one.
That's what I'm saying, that's...
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to say.
It's included.
Yeah.
So, the, the communities that have been blunt wrapped since, you know, two thousand, did so because it was a primary, um, the primary use for them was to smoke marijuana.
So it's, it is in the definitions?
Yeah, I know.
So that's kind of redundant, we can just get rid of that, huh? It's part of a...
So, yeah, so if it's, so if we're gonna take out F, they would also take it out of the definitions. I just need to know that that's what, that...
What page is it on in the definitions, any? Two?
Blunt wrap.
Blunt wrap.
Blunt wraps, yeah, two.
I just kind of feel...
So I'm kind of going back where Tom said, and it should be for twenty-one.
It should be clarified.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
The thing is, do we want to sell them in Dayton or not?
Right, that's the question.
That's the question.
To people with legal age, yes.
Right now, they're allowed, and this was inadvertently put in to not sell them to people with...
To people with legal age. They used to have to be legal age to buy tobacco.
And she wants to know if we want that part taken out or not. Do we want to still allow them to be sold to people over twenty-one?
Well, I don't have a problem with it, I just thought, meant, needed some clarification, but if you think it's okay.
No, so it was, it was left in there in error. So if you're, if you don't want it, then we'll take it out. So we need to take out the definition, and then we need to take out section F and renumber. Okay?
Why, why would anybody not want, why do we not want to sell them?
You smoke marijuana.
Just because they're, uh, they're, they're primary use.
That's what they got zigjacks for.
It's just smoking marijuana, and they're...
It's almost like now, now with the medical marijuana, I mean, with the recreational marijuana, now with the blunt wraps.
Yeah, it's all legal now.
Right.
There's no reason to put your foot in front of it now.
You still want to leave the definition of blunt wrap, right? You was getting rid of the F part.
Why would you want to leave the definition for blunt wraps?
Well, it doesn't do any harm to leave there, as blunt wrap is anywhere else in the...
No. The definition's only in there because it's of section F. So if we're gonna remove section F, I'm just...
As long as the, they, they know not to sell it to anybody else.
Yeah, it's a tobacco product, it's just like any other tobacco product. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's when they say, I didn't know.
And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't say that it has to be...
No, but any tobacco product will have to be sold, and baby products will be now twenty-one.
Other tobacco product, neither says in there, and blunt wraps.
That's what I'm reading now. Oh, first sentence says it. Any product containing, made, or derived from tobacco.
Yeah.
Or nicotine.
That's a tobacco product.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna take that out. All right, and then on page six, section K is the pharmacy restriction that's going to be state law anyway.
So we're striking K?
No, no, we're leaving K. That way it will be up to and stronger than state law.
Okay.
Okay? So, all I need you to do is to vote to send this draft with the amendments of section F forward to a public hearing.
Make a motion with the amendments.
Do accept with the amendments?
Yeah.
Motion made to approve the draft tobacco regulation as amended.
Second?
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'll go on record as a in favor.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. So, now, now I'm going to send out, probably on Tuesday, the notice to the retailers of the public hearing. It'll have to be posted on your agenda for the December twelfth, which is the date that we picked. Is that still a good day?
No. Ross moved it up to November twenty-eighth. I don't know why.
Maybe because of Thanksgiving?
I don't know, but that's the day that we're running, is November twenty-eighth.
Oh, yeah?
We talked about December twelfth, but because we had this meeting here, I think she felt she could get it in the paper in time, and so it's already gone to the Gazette, so.
It's already gone?
We sent it to Gazette because it had to be run by, like, Monday to be on for November twenty-eighth. So Ross was off by the two weeks, so.
Fortunately, I can be here.
It wasn't, it wasn't, um, she thought she was helping everything else, so six P M. on November twenty-eighth.
Six P M., okay, so it's Wednesday, November twenty-eighth.
Look at that, huh? Bring over some leftover.
Tell them I'm gonna get this done before Christmas.
Listen, I have public hearings scheduled between now and December seventeenth in Swansea, Westport, Taunton, and Norton, and yours.
I don't see this as a very complicated, uh...
I, it's not...
Hot button issue because...
I mean, it's gonna happen anyway. So I, I'm not anticipating a lot of pushback, like, we're not gonna get, I don't see us getting, um, you know, the guys that come when you would try to do flavors and cigars, so the guys that are paid for by Philip Morris.
It's mainly twenty-one, and it's gonna happen anyway, it affects one age, one year of people.
It's funny, I just, I just went to an establishment to do some education for them.
No.
A new establishment opening up, new ownership.
Here?
In, in Lakeville.
Okay.
And it was so confusing trying to explain...
Um, the December, the...
Yeah, the January thing.
Well, it's good your point didn't want to do it.
And, uh, the guy was like, why didn't you, why don't we just go twenty-one? I was like, well, some, some people don't like it, some people like it, but it was very confusing, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I just scheduled today, I just found out today, Swansea's gonna go, Westport, Taunton has a public hearing December fourth. Excuse me, Norton has a public hearing on that reg, on the smoke-free workplace reg.
Okay.
On, uh, December the third. So, they're gonna go. We're trying to do it in full river. City Council doesn't want to do it.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have to figure out another way.
And that's, I guess that was the thing, because people are already smoking. So what are you gonna do? They're gonna be already, they're gonna just go somewhere else, so.
You're gonna gather that.
I can understand those parts, all right?
Handful of people for a couple of years, so.
Yeah, so I, I definitely can understand those.
Okay, so November twenty-eighth at six, and where are we doing this?
We should probably, actually...
Well, it's posted here. You already posed, put it right here.
What did you post it as?
Planning board, yeah, so we gotta put it where it is.
Dayton Town Hall, Planning Board Office.
Dayton Town, Dayton Town Hall.
Zoning Board's already claimed the other room.
Planning Board.
The big room. But again, I, I don't see it being hot button, and we're gonna have a room full of people.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
And if worst case comes, we could postpone it to December twelfth, and we'd be all right. It's still being under, it'd be okay.
If we get a lot of people, we can move.
Move, and then somebody would stay here telling them that we're down on...
Within a matter of weeks, we're gonna be having them up over there.
Well, that's why I left it in the...
Uh, no, Tom, that's been pushed to January.
Oh, has it?
In the, because I sent Ross a copy of this memo that was gonna go to the retailers, and I left that blank inside, we'll have, we're gonna, I just need to fill in the blanks when I get there. But she never told me that she changed the date.
I found out about this yesterday afternoon at four o'clock, when she was going over with me everything that was happening while she was gone, so. And I said, the twenty-eighth, I thought we said the twelfth, and she was like, oh.
Okay, so fortunately, I can be here, so. All right, so we're all set?
Thank you so much.
All set.
Okay, so I will get...
I have a conflicting planning board, but I'll...
Can run back and forth.
I'll skip that to come, come here.
Where's that meeting?
Wait a minute, she posted it here. It can't be here, we have a planning board meeting.
On the twenty-eighth?
What time's your meeting start?
Six.
Well, that's, that's a usual, a usual scheduled date, isn't it? Oh, no, it's a week after I usually schedule.
No, it isn't.
No, it's a usually scheduled, yeah.
Thursday of the month.
Yeah, that'll be our regular meeting day.
That would be our regular meeting day.
So, so the planning board's the one that's encroaching on the Board of Health?
It's free. Well, the guy asked us to have a special meeting.
Well, we're already on the calendar upstairs, so.
Yeah, well, you have preference then.
Uh, we have preference.
Yeah, there was enough time before the twenty-eighth, you know, we should...
We'll find a room.
Planning board can change the...
This is, this is not a public hearing anyway, it's just a special meeting. We're doing the, uh, we're doing the developer a favor, the engineer.
We still have time before then, so we could move the location of the meeting, because we, it's still more than forty-eight hours. We could move it up to the select...
Well, not if it's in the papers, we'll leave it alone.
Oh, that's right, random April.
We'll leave Oz alone. And we'll figure it out. Plus, she already has the date, so we have it.
Can't change it now.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll go in the sewer office.
Yep, says Wednesday, November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, at Dayton Town Hall, lower level nine seven nine. Service at Dayton Mass in the Planning Board Office at six P M.
Okay. All right then.
Sorry for the confusion.
We'll have to let Terry know that...
I'm glad you said something.
Stacy can write a note for her right now.
Okay, do you need me for the...
No. Thank you so much.
Stacy, Stacy, let's make a copy of this.
All right, good night. We're gonna see you, have a great day.
You too, please. I can go somewhere else, I'm not gonna...
Go home. You have to bring something, huh? Show up any happy, you have it.
No.
Yeah, you smoke.
That would be, that would be something.
Closet smoker, yeah.
And I'll send you a copy of the ETS report. When you want me to send it, you want me to send it here?
Yeah, I just wanna send it to Ross, just say forward to matter or whatever.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you can send it to me. If anything you have, you can send my way.
Just, just send it to Ross, and we'll have it distributed to all of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of community to go and to deal with it after the holidays. This is no urgency on that. Norton is doing it because they wanna make sure that they don't have any smoking bars, food bars. And most of the boards did that way back, originally.
Is that much, March, April, did that?
All right.
Thank you.
I'll get everything.
Terry, good night.
Good night.
All right.
Are you, are we ready for five B?
Sure.
Okay. Next item is review, discuss and act on eighteen eighty-one County Street. And that being said, we'll turn it over to the health agent to...
Nice to have plans. Yes, um, so eighteen eighty-one County Street is Giorgio's Restaurant. We're doing a septic repair for them now. The engineer had a family emergency, is not able to attend tonight, but, um, they're trying to move this along because they have a sale pending. My issue is, as your agent, and I started here thirteen months ago, after I did my first few reviews, and you guys saw everything I did, you authorized me to basically have permission to approve, um, applications for residential. We haven't had a commercial application since I've been here, so, um, basically, two things. Number one is I'm looking for the board to, if the board wants to, give me authorization to complete my review and issue the permit, assuming they meet all the, oh, so, I'm sorry. Number two is, this is a Microfast nine point O. It is a, um, basically wastewater treatment plant, but it goes on private property. It's necessary because we only have two feet of suitable material in the ground. Normally, you have four feet, but they don't have it. We also have space constraints here, because we're trying to stay out from under the parking lot, because you don't want to lose parking. So the Microfast nine point O allows you two feet of material, a two-foot separation of water table, and a fifty percent reduction in the size of the system. So this avoids a mound, avoids losing parking spaces, that's why they selected this, um, design. You know, we're still, he submitted just one copy of the plan here, and I've been looking it over, and I spent a lot of time with it. It's three things, it's a regular septic system, it's pressured douse because it's over two thousand gallons a day, and it's a Microfast system, so it's taking more time than a regular system to review. But I've got a whole list of things to change this, change that, give me counts for that, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, ultimately, there's a timeline constraint here, that's why the push. So, um, if anybody has any input they can throw at me for Microfast nine point Os, I've only designed one, and it was a while ago, so, um, you know, I've got all the documents, but ultimately, what happens with a nine point, a Microfast is you have to send your design to them, and they have to approve it.
That's, 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 that's key.
And so, and for example, here, they might say fifteen hundred gallon grease trap is not big enough. You have to have a twenty-five hundred in front of it. Or they might say, hey, we, we need to have, they, in fact, said you had to have two Microfast nine point Os because the first one, although a nine point O can handle nine thousand gallons a day, it's the load coming out of the restaurant that triggered the need for two in order to get the oxygen demand down, so. So that's towards that.
Yeah, uh, typically, like we have in the past, um, as long as it doesn't affect enough butter, Todd is very knowledgeable, he can approve in-house. And this way, they get expedited and...
I'll make a motion to, uh, allow Todd to review and approve the plan, uh, provided it's naturally feasibly compliant.
Second?
Second. Motion's made and seconded to authorize the health agent to approve, uh, commercial plans. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Have any questions?
Sorry I was late. I don't read at this point.
All right, you've been talking with Todd, everybody's been...
I've been talking with Todd, I've been talking with the engineers, so.
Yep.
What we do, we disauthorize Todd.
Oh, yeah, I need, that's the only set of plans I got right now.
No, I, I know, but make sure you're all set.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm all set. So, um, I finished my review today, I've gotta type it up and send it off to the engineer for what other changes I need, want, whatever. And, um, I met with him yesterday, I think it was yesterday. And then over my preliminary view, there was some other things I didn't need from him, and it was gonna take him some time to put the calcs together, so I figured I'd get the ball rolling on that stuff, so. And we'll wait and see. And he's got a family emergency today, so I don't expect anything.
He sent him a message, so.
Yeah, so I didn't expect anything from him before Tuesday, but I told him he didn't need to be here for what we were gonna be, we're not discussing the specifics of it at this point, so. And that's that.
Okay.
So, but the board has authorized me with the vote to, um, be able to issue the permit as soon as I've completed my review.
Okay.
So there'll be no more board meetings, as soon as the engineer revises everything, I can approve, so.
Okay.
Very good.
Moving on to number five C, review, discuss and act, five-year wish list. Uh, we received, I'm not sure if you, I think Ross distributed it to everybody perhaps. Mallory sent out a memo, uh, regarding a five-year wish list for all departments. That being exactly what we think we're going to need over the next five years, whether it be, uh, folders up to a vehicle for the animal control officer.
I, I also got one as a department, like a department head, so I will do my own. And then when she was sitting asking about it...
Oh, you, you got a five-year wish list, too?
I'm supposed to do a five-year wish list.
I didn't know she had anything she wanted.
Yeah, no kidding, huh? Uh, Ross and Todd have already come up with a couple of things. Television.
And she said they don't have to be sensible things. They can be, you, some sensible things, but those things that you think, oh, I really would like, but I don't think I'll ever get, kind of thing, like a vehicle.
Oh, it's a, it's a want or a need kind of thing.
Hey, do you have a phone?
No. Are you talking, you're talking one of my desk or a cellphone? No, I don't have either.
We're gonna put that in the budget this year.
Yeah, I need it.
You don't say.
I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought you had it already.
Can you be quiet?
Yeah, I thought you had it already. What, what can we do to get this guy home?
Well, are you talking one of my desk or are you talking a cellphone?
I think just...
Cellphone, I'd like to get it, but, yeah.
Because I think a stipend would be probably the better way to go.
Yeah.
A stipend might be the better way to go, I think Jim was doing a stipend, so.
You could literally, if you're some, I look up things while I'm on, yeah.
Coalition pays for mine.
I wouldn't recommend that for all, yeah, last time I had problems, yeah, I had problems.
Well, once our files get scanned in, then the theory would be that with an iPad, I could access them remotely from the field, and that would be the better way to go, so.
Yeah, iPads are in there, right?
I even got like the...
I already have one.
The soil apps.
Um, there was already one there, so.
I just grab it, I see what kind of landform it is.
I do have an iPad.
What?
I use it for everything, I get the soil apps on hand.
Oh, no, I...
Just see what kind of, what apparent material, I just look, just to be like consistent when we're out there.
Yeah, you can tag the locations of the test bits by GPS and everything, I know, it's, it's a wonderful tool, so. But we're getting there. So I think getting the file scanned in, then we go jump to the iPad, and that's the tool I use, instead of learning on the phone and then switching to the iPad.
You could be sitting at a perk for hours and, and still do emails, whatever it is. Get some, get some work done while you're at, waiting, waiting for hours at a perk.
Paint the drawing.
Yeah.
Did Jim mention they're going to request a new vehicle for building commissioner and health agent?
I didn't hear that.
Oh, you didn't?
I thought Jim was supposed to get one like two years ago.
Who's that?
Jim.
That one's got like two hundred and seventy thousand miles on it, it's good to go.
He took care of that, you don't do anything, you don't go anywhere.
Well, I went out to Hunter's Hill to do perks the other day, and that was quite the ride in the mud, so, but. So, yeah.
It's on your wish list right now, I mean, uh...
I left it at the office, um... Yeah, I can tell you what we got, but it was a lot of, it was just, some was screwball stuff, and some of it was, like, very important, like, um, I can't remember now. Like, we wanted the filing system done, I mean, that, that's very important to us. I mean, I know it's, that's like a one-year plan, but it's still part of that whole five-year where we want to be at, so. I forget what else.
They're gonna be, well, the scanner, or the plan copier, I don't know which is it gonna be, uh, is gonna be for multiple officers, correct?
I believe so, because those are big and expensive, so, yep.
Ten grand?
Yeah, we paid eight for one of my offices.
They're gonna scan or just copy, I wonder?
Should do everything.
It should do everything, excuse me, and print, you could print it right from your computer, too, so, yeah. It should do all of it.
Okay.
That's huge to have.
It is, but you need a place for it, and like, if you want to put it here, they take up about the same amount of room as what Stacy's got with the desk.
Wow.
But then you're gonna lose this as a, but if we've got another place to have your meetings, then you wouldn't necessarily need the space, so. But that's why in five years, if she knows now what everybody wants, she can mark it in, so.
Well, they could make a little corner far right there, on the way into the, on the right-hand side.
They're trying to reconfigure down here, so.
Well, it's supposed to be reconfigured, but no, it might be temperature sensitive over there. At the door, at the door?
Yeah, because humidity affects the paper.
Eight by ten space over here.
So anyhow, um, so if you think of it, I'll send over the list, yep.
Kind of look around the office, see what's missing? What you actually need, or if you...
Yeah, we thought of a TV in case we want to do a webinar, instead of all huddling over each other in one of the offices.
You might be able to get a laptop or a, um, iPad from the coalition. I know I have, every, every town gets one or two.
Well, one of the things on a wish list, not only is a phone from my desk, but we want one in the conference room, so that we can have, you know, put right there on the speakerphone, and, or I can go in there to take calls if I need privacy.
Some offices actually have is a, and I, I like, I actually want to change a cordless phone.
They were great in my office.
So when you say, hold on, then you actually go into the file, you know, and hold, and whatever, you can just keep working.
I'll, I'll put it on the wish list.
That room actually is good, because there are times when you really can't discuss on a border health matter, and you guys probably have been in that situation. I mean, you gotta have privacy, so, um, that room works well, I think.
That's a good one.
Soundproof, too, for the most part, so.
Yep.
All right, all set with that? Moving on. Uh, we do, we've, number six A, old business review, discuss act, curbside textile recycling contract. We've finally, I think, got it corrected to what we were looking for, the, the renewal after three years would be monthly. And, um, the only thing they did was write in the date, which I don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, so there was, they hadn't changed something, and I emailed him, he said, change it right away, and a week went by, I'm like, what's up? And he's like, they hadn't sent it, and so he emailed us, they corrected one, but we don't have their hard signed one for the board to sign. But it's, they've approved all the changes, we're just waiting for the hard copy, so nothing we can do tonight.
Make a motion.
We were hoping to have that by tonight.
Table until next meeting, and hope still we have it by then.
Did you see copies of it?
I can see it.
Got sent out, right? I think Ross sent them out.
She might have.
Yeah, I think she did it. You, please do this, because we, we all, we talked about it a lot.
It's okay, we can, we can table till next time.
I'll second the motion.
To table?
Yep.
Motion's made, seconded to table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Okay, Harry's table, um...
I gotta hold on to my clothes, we'll know what it is.
Well, it takes three weeks, once we get it started, for it to start, so I'm thinking it might be right around Christmas.
See, this one doesn't say it. This is not the updated one, you know?
No, it isn't, okay. Well, again, it was... Yeah, this was the one they signed, and it said that they would automatically renew the extension term, and we wanted it for yearly, like, one-year time, instead of three-year term, so.
The one that Ross sent out did say month, one by month, so. And number six B?
Month, month, yes, yep.
Very rough.
Yeah.
New discuss act leash law regulations. I think we did a little dressing up on it, and added, uh, defined structure under twenty-one D.
Yep. Now, this is going for the public hearing? This is done?
We had the public hearing.
We did? Oh, yeah, we did, didn't we?
I think I'll read it.
Yeah, we did.
Town of Dayton leash law regulations.
We just had a couple...
If your dog is off your property on leash, it will be picked up by animal control. If it has a town tag, it will be returned to you the first time with a warning. If the dog does not have a town tag, then it will be taken to the shelter... The first time with a warning, if the dog does not have a town tag, then it will be taken to the shelter. And everything will be done to find the owner of said dog, before you can take your dog home, you will have to get a town tag and have proof of a current rabies vaccination. If the dog needs to stay at the shelter while you get your documents, there will be a boarding charge of twenty five dollars per day. If your dog does not have an updated rabies vaccine, one will be given to your dog at your expense. Every incident will require you to provide rabies and town tag information. Repeated offenses will be issued citations pursuant to mass general law, non criminal disposition. Chapter one forty, section one seventy three A, the violation of dog control laws. First offense is the warning, second offense is fifty dollars, third offense is sixty dollars, fourth offense is a hundred dollars. And more than four violations will result in additional fines, hearings, and/or court proceedings. These regulations shall take effect immedi- immediately upon passage by the Dighton Board of Health. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, if I may, just to get clarify, well, we already discussed it, but just so you get your input, we discussed di- daily or. Yeah, as meaning every day, every other day, I mean.
Every day.
So, you agree with that?
Yes.
You weren't here for the last meeting. Do we need to make a motion to, we already, we already.
It's already approved.
Yeah, we just gotta sign it, okay. Now, I know Roz is working on a book, we could just, that little tab right there for, um, starting a leash law.
Yep, we've, um, we started putting it together. Next couple of weeks, so we're not gonna get much done.
No, no. I'll let you go read that.
You're a good doctor.
I know. What's that, sir?
I got a K out of that.
I still got it, no wonder you got the pins in there, they're worth it, it's okay, I'm, I'm good.
Well, no, you can never screw one of those up, those things work forever.
Beautiful.
There you go. It works forever.
That's it.
So?
I don't wanna rush you. Uh, moving on to number six C, review discuss an act at four eleven Main Street. I guess you have to fill us in on now.
I do, uh, went by the site, and they have.
Oh, I know which one it is.
A bunch of stuff piled up in the driveway, like mattresses and other stuff, so we sent them a friendly letter saying, hey, can you clean up your stuff by tonight? I think it was tonight, maybe it was October thirty first, I forget. That was like on a Thursday, they called on Monday and said they've gotten a dumpster, but can they have more time, they weren't gonna be done, and I said absolutely, as long as you keep us in the loop. I've driven by there and indeed, there was a trailer there, they put tires and stuff in to get rid of, and there's a dumpster that they, they're filling up, but it's just slow, there's a lot of stuff, so they're working on it. So I gave them more time.
Yeah, a lot of times it's.
Sounds good.
Doesn't get there overnight, so.
So they're working on it.
As long as they're doing their part, great.
Yep.
Yeah, they had a dumpster within a matter of two days.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was quick.
So, um, I remember that one, though, okay, moving on then. Six D, review discuss an act at ten thirty Oak Street.
Uh, same thing, um, except this site has more like stuff floating around their yard, for lack of a better word, um. Just random stuff all over the place, we sent them the letter, they also have a couple cars that.
Well, from parts, still.
Um, no, it wasn't too bad, but doesn't matter, those stuff, so we sent them the letter, and same thing, they got the letter and we gave them till tonight, and she called. Thursday last week or Monday and said, hey, I need more time, um, it's a lot of stuff, my father's, that'll leave, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, so we said yes. Then apparently, we found out their method of disposal of the trash was to burn it all. So the fire department had to shut them down and tell them that you can't burn your trash, so, um, from what I understand, they haven't burned since, um, but they are. In the process of cleaning up and asked for some more time, so we told them, yes, again, as long as you keep us informed, I'll give you more time, so.
You did a physical inspection on, on the property, right?
We were, um, in the street in the lot next door, I was doing a park test on, so, I didn't actually go on this property.
See any pit bulls?
Never heard a dog, or saw a dog.
There's still at least three on the property.
Three on the property?
At least three.
But I said, we never saw them.
Do we not have license now? Are they licensed?
They never got licensed, he removed them from the property for a while, but I think he's back living on the property, he wasn't for a while. And he's brought them back, I noticed them the other day, they're littler ones, they're probably not the ones that were there when we were having the problem with them.
Nine at one time, was it?
Yeah.
Little, all puppies, all puppies.
So, but.
So they registered then, or not, is that?
No, they're not, as far as I know, they're not registered.
Well, what's gonna end up happening is we'll be following up on this.
We'll check on the, uh.
I can edit the list of.
Yep, and rabies, if not, we'll, we'll have to, uh, do some enforcement on it.
That's what iPads for, huh?
Yeah, very, very, uh.
Ask him what time he thinks he needs, but then obviously, you have a time that's, uh, where you're looking for more compliance in your head, so try to meet him halfway there.
Well, as long as he's moving forward, I, I'll, I'll help him, but if you wanna stop, that's when I'm gonna get you an order, so, yeah. But I felt to start with a friendly letter first, and see where it goes, I did send out it, not that it's here, on those, another place I saw like a love seat in their front yard, and I sent them a nice letter saying you can't leave the love seat in your front yard, so. See if it gets removed.
You wanna follow up, well, let's see if he's licensed, uh, for the animals, and, um. That's another thing we wanna do, Stacy, we never did connect with the town clerk, so you can.
Well, what they do is, they, they send me what they put on the computer, they send it to my iPad, so I have it already.
Oh, you have it, okay.
Ideal, we, we figured out something, so I didn't have to connect into there.
Okay.
You have to have to say you wanna.
Oh, okay.
Same as we just had with the man along. Yeah, she's got to be to sign it, but.
Yeah, we can't, we have to have the.
Yeah.
Uh, moving on to six E, review discuss an act stump and wood waste burial regulations, would you like to read this, since you were after it?
Sure.
All right.
I just took what you did and read it.
Well, this isn't, this isn't the public hearing, so I don't think you need to read the whole thing.
Well, for the, for the public.
So regulations, stump, stumps and wood waste are not, will not be permitted to be buried within a town of Dayton, and shall be disposed of offsite in accordance with the following. Stumps and other wood waste shall be disposed of at DEP approved wood waste disposal sites and or other approved wood waste reclamation facilities as defined in three ten CMR. Sixteen point O and DEP guidance, E W P ninety eight zero zero six. There were authority definitions of wood waste, discarded material consisting of trees, stumps, brush, including but not, not limited to sawdust, chips, shavings, and bark. Uh, the violations, as we had discussed at the last meeting, um, will follow the twenty one D, um. So up to, you know, three hundred dollar citation, um, or if this continues a health order, uh, if the final order exceed one, three hundred dollars. Or by final criminal complaint, uh, each day, any violation exists, exists shall be deemed a separate offense. Uh, also, the border health will not act on permits associated with any property which has an open violation of the regulation, and the Dighton Building Department. Shall be notified of any property with an open violation of this regulation, the violation shall be linked to the certificate of compliance.
We need to do a sign this one too.
We didn't have the hearing on it yet.
Oh, we didn't have all the language, okay, what date do we schedule this one for?
We haven't yet, we're gonna do it the first meeting in December.
December twelfth is the date that we were targeting.
So I wonder whether they should have a motion to.
Move this.
Move this to a public hearing.
Make the motion to, uh, schedule a public hearing for December twelfth.
Second, motion made second, all favor?
Aye.
Pose, okay, we'll, uh, see everyone on December twelfth, is that what we're doing, okay. Any questions, uh, come to that meeting, we'll discuss it. Let's do some reports, if we're ready.
Well, just first off, I'd just say, there is no payroll or bill, so we're skipping that anyway, so. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
No payroll?
I'm sorry, they were hiding in there, uh, payroll, uh, this is for, I think it's just for, uh, I guess it's a couple of weeks in here. Three thousand five hundred and seventy two dollars, and bills paid of six hundred and seventy five dollars, the bill's amounted to the MHOA. Um, that's the conference fees and, and dues and stuff, is that what that is? Yep, and that's it, so, yeah.
How are we gonna, how are we gonna have, does anybody know, well, you're gonna get fat money, right?
I am not.
Oh, you're out of, uh.
Otherwise, no, I am, but it would restrict me to what I can go to, and I need type of five credits.
Oh, okay, I'm not doing any, they restrict you pretty much.
I'm, I'm sticking with.
Well, you're not staying over anyway, right?
Emergency preparedness part.
I'm not staying over.
But for what Roz and I do, I need that more than.
Right, all I need credit is my R S, so.
See, I, I, P's don't need.
You don't need.
They'll pay for your, for your lodging and the conference.
Yeah.
For the P, do you still need it for the soil value anymore?
I need soil value and systems by the.
Yeah, what's that, fifteen, five hours a year, it's not even.
Yeah.
No, ten hours every three years.
Ten, yeah, ten hours every three years, I already got that, I'm just gonna, I never, I have to turn it in.
So that's the beauty of the P's, and no C U's, which I think there should be, C U's and P's, but there aren't, so.
You not gotta change your mind for getting in?
There is a. I don't think so.
But they have some good stuff there, I like that one.
I, I, I don't know, I might, I don't know, it's, maybe too late to, too late to register, I don't know.
Fifty minutes of it.
I don't think it's too late to register.
I do have a comment regarding that.
It's maybe too late to get up and tell.
Well, I, I'm only going on one day anyway, Thursday, I was gonna do the, uh, emergency prep stuff, I still might. I probably will. Okay, moving on to number nine, inspectors' reports, Chris, uh, animal control officer?
The answer to that is no, not, not red, not licensed those dogs, not on the property.
They're not licensed?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Um, I will be starting barn inspections on Monday, I'm hoping to get as many done as possible, ho- hoping that I'm not out there in December, uh, cold and snow and everything like that. Um, stable and barn, so we will, um, if you've never seen me before, and I find out that you have chickens or something on your property, or something new on your property, I will stop by. If you're not there, I tack something to the barn door or something, so you know that I've been there, and if there's any problems, I will leave that on the. On the, uh, letter that I le- leave, and your, I need you to call me so we can fix what needs to be done. I've only had to do that once, so that's good, that our stables and our barns are clean and, and health, uh, healthy and all that kinda stuff. Um, the other thing that I have, I got a call this week from communications. And, um, twenty six fifty one Pleasant Street.
Oh, okay.
Um, somebody hit a duck that was in the street, or flew into his windshield and ru- and, um, cracked his windshield. So he's going after that, that's not something that pertains to me, but, um, I think we're gonna have to call them in. And have, talk to them about keeping their animals on their property, I have a lot of people complaining that the guinea hens are on their property, the turkeys are on their property, they're always in the middle of the road. But every time I go there, I never see them in the road, but I, I'm sure they do, because they, now that all the vegetation's starting to die, they're gonna start wandering back into the road. It was good for the summer, because they were kept on the property, cause all the vegetation that was on the property, they stayed there, but I don't think they are anymore, so we're gonna have to. Um, probably call them in and just.
All those are his though?
Yes.
We could, we should amend our bylaw at, at the annual town meeting, where as it says about keeping your animals off, you know. I think it says cows, right, but I think maybe it should be all animals, keep them, you gotta keep them out of the street.
Yeah, out of the street, yes.
Not nineteen fifty anymore, where your car goes by every five, once every five minutes, you know.
Right, so I have.
We also have those regulations that no one shall create a nuisance.
A nuisance, right.
It covers pretty much everything.
Yeah, the nuisance thing is.
So, um, so that's that, um, speaking of ducks, that property on Elm Street that had, always had ducks, has, um, been foreclosed on.
Oh, yeah?
Um, and I was called there because they were gonna make her leave a cat behind. Anyways, we found two goats on the property that were very sickly, one had to be put to sleep. I don't know, I haven't heard from, uh, A R L if they put the other one to sleep, um, there will be charges from A R L. Uh, so, uh, she's no longer there, so that property is, we won't have ducks there anymore.
I was gonna say, she had goat, duh, goats and ducks.
Right, and fed all the feral cats in the neighborhood, so, um, and the other thing is, I just had it, my phone. I forgot. I guess that's it.
While she's thinking about it, I am not working Monday, cause it's Veterans Day, so if you need help with the barns, I'm not coming around.
No, um, I, I, oh, I do have somebody gonna be riding with me on Monday, I usually go by myself, but I do have somebody riding with me. Um, she's a student that's, um, going for animal health, she wants to be a large vet tech, which is very unusual. She likes to large animals, so I figured if I brought her around on my inspections, give her, sorta get her feet wet and the big barns and what goes on, and what to look for and that kinda stuff. So I will have somebody riding with me on that day. Um, I think that's it.
Would you have to send a letter out to the owner at ten thirty Oak?
Will I, I can.
Yeah, that way they will.
I don't, I don't know if, I mean, if they only have three dogs, all they need is licenses, but he was supposed to have a county license and not have. I think the last letter we sent him, he's not supposed to have so many dogs, I think we put a cap on how many.
Still need licenses.
Right, there's still many licenses.
So that's what we did with, uh, we'll, we'll start with that first, before we, uh, get into enforcement of the state law, so.
Okay.
All right.
Health agent? I had a question for Stacy, I'll just a comment.
Yeah, I did too.
Um, now that we just passed this leash law and signed, uh, if you just keep a log for us, just to keep us the date and see if we have, uh, issues.
Yep.
Thank you.
They are, they're gonna be made available on the planning board, we're all gonna have a copy.
Yeah.
Um, of the, uh, what, what's transpired, uh. Bond, bond permits, uh, quarantines, uh, daily work logs, so whatever you wanna see, we're all.
And intake forms, I gave you intake forms too.
So.
Oh, nice.
Um, so, back to that one with the animals, the duck that got hit, um, yeah, we've gotten complaints about turkeys, like thirty turkeys roaming the neighborhood as a group, so.
Thirty turkeys are not all theirs, I think they, they sorta meet up with the other turkeys, the wild turkeys, cause they, I have seen wild turkeys on their property, so. They sort, they sort of friendly and congreg- congregate, and then sorta move along in a pack.
Well, the, the question was, I guess, with dealing with a, a, a duck strike and, and, and turkey stuff, is this for the realm of the agricultural commission? Is this something that they would be involved in?
Yes, they can be.
How do we go about?
Somebody has to make a complaint to them.
It has to be a complaint to them, it can't be the board of health asking them to look into it.
Um, it could be, it's better if it comes from a citizen. Somebody that lives around them, and I don't want, uh, clearly complaints that they just don't like them, and so they're gonna complain, I want, you know, like this guy. Right, like this guy that his, it was Joe Fazato, his, he, the duck ran into his windshield, he would have a complaint, that he could go to the agricultural commission. And the chairperson of the agricultural commission is Mr. Rujo.
Did you happen to talk to, um, th- this individual at the Pleasant Street?
I have not recently, I had a while back, and we, things got, were good.
Yeah. And now all of a sudden. If, if, if when you're around, you could say, hey, I've been around a few times, I haven't seen anything, I'm getting complaints.
The thing is, you never can get them home.
Yeah.
They always call me, say, oh, I saw you on, on my cameras, oh, what do you need?
That's good, at least you could say, hey, listen, we're getting complaints, so, uh, obviously if we see it, it's a violation, so don't let it happen, please. This way they might curtail something from coming up.
Another issue there, and I haven't happened to notice in a while, was the overgrown front yard, it's no longer flowers. It's totally overgrown.
Now it's all dying and stuff like that.
Which we might have to send them a cut your grass letter.
Tough situation over there.
My man might have a, uh, letter you can use, just change a couple of words, he might be asking himself again. My man might have a, uh, letter you can use, just change a couple of words, because my man's gonna himself again.
I think that's it.
You're up.
Okay, um. It's been very busy with perk test applications been flying in, uh, just, we went like a few weeks without one, um, so they're coming in a lot. Uh, just for next week, Monday is a holiday, Wednesday and Thursday I'm gonna be in Falmouth, which leaves me here in the office only on Tuesday. The week after, Thanksgiving is the Wednesday, Thursday holidays, so I'm only gonna be here two days that week, so we're very limited in what's gonna be accomplished in the next two weeks. I've been making every installer aware of that fact that, you know, you're not gonna be able to get stuff, but, um. Other than that, it's just been busy and say, things like Giorgio's review takes a while, it's a lot longer than a usual one, um. But, um, I guess we're alright, um, is there anything else? Of note?
If, if there is a situation, I'm sure Joe would go on and do it.
Yeah, if it was an emergency, but they've been told fair warning that there's no inspections, then that's, you know, that's a different story, so.
Correct.
But.
If needed, just let me know if there's anything maybe on the way in, back into town.
Well. Well, obviously it's gonna be completely different if they need that inspection and they're on a different schedule at that point in time, so.
Yeah, cause if they say, I know, it's like a Friday.
But people who came in today to get their permit, I said, not, and they're like, alright, I'm just not gonna start until December, it's just easier.
Yeah.
But I've got others that are trying to do the open hole, like Tuesday, so they can get the final, like the Tuesday out.
It's tough, cause it gets dark quick now.
Yeah, it does.
By the time I get out four thirty, it's done.
Um, five o'clock, we're done.
Trying to see something at night.
Um, I will say that the space upstairs, uh, in Old Town Hall is almost done, they're like sanding the floors now, um. I believe the anticipated opening date, but I guess the selectman made it take in January, so. But that'll be nice to move our meetings over to there.
Beautiful floor, huh?
It is very, 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 very nice, um, I haven't seen it.
Can't wait to see it finished.
Yeah, they, they were buffing it and taking off the layers of stain and then we're gonna be refinishing it, but.
And the benches along the side.
Yeah, it's good. It's gonna, it's gonna be nice, so, um. Yeah, I don't think, um, I think I've took a couple of people off lately, but, you know, that comes with the territory, so.
Mm-hmm.
It's during the pub.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I do remember what I want, the other thing I want to say.
Speaking of putting some people off.
Speaking of putting some people off, and that, and that's true, because, um, I was at the police station at this last Monday, but the Monday before, and I had a gentleman walk in.
And with the territory, right.
And say to our communicator, I was told by someone that Dyson does not recognize service dogs. So, I went in, I went out and I spoke with the gentleman to find that somebody in our town, a town elected official in this town. Went to somebody on the track with a service dog and told him he could not be down there walking his dog and being with his dog. The dog was definitely a service dog, had the red coat, don't talk to me kinda thing, he was, he was a trained, um, service dog, so it wasn't like, he didn't know it was a service dog. I just want people to know that's not true, service dogs are welcome anywhere, we are getting new signage. Dogs and pets are not allowed on the track or at playgrounds, that is true, but a service dog is something completely different. And, um, so that is not r- right, who told him that was wrong, and so. We are service dog friendly.
Thank you.
Um, but is they pick up after your pet though, I'm assuming still, right?
Yes, but that, usually with service dogs, you don't have that problem, they're very, they're trained as well as the dogs are trained.
They probably pick up after themselves.
They flush it down the.
They carry little, they carry little bags, pretty good.
So, um, so I just want people to be aware, if you've heard that, that it's not true. You're more than welcome to come. Lucky dog.
We, we don't have any, any updates on Stormwater, we haven't really.
Uh, the only thing that happened with Stormwater is at the arts festival, Nancy Blot was there and had a table and handed out a lot of bags and grippers and tried to spread the word, um. So I guess it was a very successful event. Uh, other than that, we're still working on regs and the next meeting's like November, mm, nineteenth-ish or something, I don't know.
That sounds about right.
It's like the Monday before Thanksgiving, so.
I agree, yeah.
Um, so nothing to report there, emergency preparedness, nothing to report there right now, um. Still processing and getting rid of the cots and some of that kinda stuff, um, we're gonna be doing.
Do you have them yet?
No.
Uh, there's some in the old shelter, in the shelter, I'm just telling you, I was told to leave them nearby, somebody, and I left them there.
Yeah, leave them in, so, um, yeah.
It's that candy that lasts forever up against stairs of anything too.
Anyhow, um, nothing new to report.
Okay.
Gonna have to get them out of there.
Have any correspondence for us to read?
Announcements holder is blank.
Okay.
Announcements. Three, got three. Free breakfast for Dyson veterans will be held at West Dyson Congregational Church, twenty-seven sixty-seven Horton Street, Dyson Mass at nine AM. On Saturday, November tenth, two thousand eighteen. The Dyson Lions Food Bank Distribution will be on Saturday, November seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Town Hall lower level, nine seven nine Somerset Ave, from eight AM to nine AM. The Lights On Ceremony will be held on Novem- uh, it was December sec- second.
Nope, not November.
It just says November second.
No.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, I'm sure, yep, it's Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Three thirty, yeah. Alright, start again. The Lights On Ceremony will be held on November twenty-fourth at three PM be ta- behind Town Hall. There will be a complimentary refreshments and a performance by the Dyson Hall with marching band, all residents are invited.
That's the one, uh.
Good time.
Is that the one I'm going to, cause they don't have a service safe person?
The veterans, I heard you talking to somebody.
Is that the one, the tenth or the twelfth, that's the twelfth, right?
The, the tel- tenth is your MHO, M H A B.
Yeah.
Yeah, Sat.
Thing, that's a Saturday, is that the Saturday?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the twenty-ninth is, or twenty-fourth is after that, um, nobody's come into our office yet about this event, so I don't know.
The lights on.
Yeah, I don't know what there's.
Which one you doing, the tenth?
To care the tenth, yes.
Yeah, I, we already took care of that, like two years ago.
See, the.
Sure.
That's all said.
Probably that, I'm sorry.
Because it's what, lions or something like that, yeah, so, so lions is different, they don't need a permit from us, so.
Uh, we were talking about the veterans, weren't we?
Yeah, the veterans on the Sat- it's Saturday, it's Saturday.
This Saturday?
Okay, yes.
We approved, we approved that.
You were talking about Don Hirsch about it.
Right, but we're talking about Lights On right now.
No, we weren't, he was talking about the tenth, cause he.
Alright, well, Lights On, they're serving refreshments too, something, so.
Lions Club.
Yeah.
Lions Club.
But again, nobody's approached me about that one either, I mean, that one, the Lions Club is, I mean, that, that's. Yes, veterans is a meal, right?
Yes.
You're providing the food.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so we talked about that one, but no.
We, we talked about this, the only thing we recommended was we put a sign, it hasn't been inspected and, and.
If you could have gone both ways, but it's easier to just do that, to have the safe surf.
So, yeah. So, they're doing the serving, you're making the food, you're bringing it, they're just serving it.
It's easy and it's better, because then you have that, we know that there's a, an experienced person who are, and just they had to oversee. Cause when you have volunteers, that's the worst thing, when you have volunteers, everybody means well.
Yeah. Mr. Hirsch is gonna take.
But you might have somebody that doesn't know what they're doing.
Yeah, I think we.
But he hasn't taken it yet, but he's complaining on taking it.
Right. But, going forward, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty sure my husband's gonna be there, he's also serving.
There you go.
Put a sign up too, any allergies, anything.
And if I had to be there, I could be there.
Yeah, totally, good to put up a, a signage that says, uh.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Uh, indicating any, if anyone had allergies.
I told them that.
You were gonna be there, I heard you.
To notify the server.
You heard me say that to him, right?
Yeah, the other day.
Uh, put up a sign about allergies and, and, uh. Those things.
Yeah, which, what, what do they understand?
No, that hadn't been inspected by the local board of health, but.
What are they serving at this thing?
It'd be fine.
General egg, bacon sauce is the whole price.
There you go.
Nothing really.
Yeah.
Yeah, approval the minutes.
Uh, have you read the minutes? I did, and I, I should have, I should have read it before, I only saw one thing, I apologize.
Yeah.
Where it says old business, this is Kevin Bernard, just missing it all.
We know, yeah, we don't, we don't.
I know.
Um, if you read the ones that she sent out for us, um, if you know it on the second page. Uh, the one she sent out to my name had question marks, I saw it.
Yeah.
So I, I amended it today because I, I did finally get on board with the tobacco twenty-one thing, so.
Yes, you couldn't remember if you had voted in favor or if you hadn't voted, so.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that was the only thing I amended it.
Oh, we gotta take out the question marks and it says Bernard and not Bernardo.
On the very last one.
On daddy.
Daddy.
Uh, uh, it's an motion to approve those, uh, amendments noted.
So move. What, what page was, uh, your name?
The, Ocean Main, second, all favor?
That's it.
I, I.
Okay.
Pose, motion carried.
Second page, Kevin?
Uh, yeah, you just, you just.
Second page, uh, third, third page. This is, oh, old business, curbside, six thousand.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then, uh, while we're looking at this, w- how did we leave off, um, on the, um, sanitation facilities regulation? I forget.
That's another one, it's gonna be December twelfth.
December twelfth, okay, I'm just trying to remember.
But we were all set with that one, I believe.
Yeah.
So you guys gonna sign it?
I'll sign one here, I'll be here.
Yeah, we'll make the changes on the other sheets, but.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, it's. Not, doesn't. Did she not put a signature on it?
No, you just.
Signed it.
This is the correct one.
We'll make, yeah, we'll make the changes.
You can do what you do and then, cause it's not stapled.
I don't know. Yeah, I should have read it before, but I didn't get a chance.
Just the right one, I don't wanna sign the wrong one.
I think you want you to sign the one that's not stapled, that's the one with the tab on it for sign here. We're just gonna make the changes, oh, does sheet two make the changes?
Oh, on the page on the first page, yeah. No idea what today is, eight?
Eight. I think we're told it's Friday.
You're told it's Friday.
There you go.
Hold on.
You got the whole folder, the rest of it.
Hold, hold.
That's what I'm reading here tonight, we try to.
Public meeting, you have the door.
That's right. Any other public info?
Uh, I have one quick little thing, I do too, um, do you wanna press?
Sure, um, Kevin, I don't know if you're, and I, you said the new food code, um, there's, there's a problem with the new food code. That I know myself and a handful of other towns are scrambling to quickly address with a quick regulation. But, um, the new food code el- eliminates. Retail food establishments amongst other things, but the biggest concern is retail food establishments that don't have any time, temperature control, they're potentially at, or potentially hazardous foods. Uh, they no longer need a permit, they don't get inspected, they get nothing, um, that's a big problem, um. It sends the wrong message, and who's to say? I, I look at it from, okay, right now, maybe they just have chips, candy, soda, things like that, but. You're saying you don't need a permit, well then in a year, they're bringing milk in, they're bringing a hot dog roll or whatever it may be.
Yeah.
They're gonna say, well, we never needed a permit, or we're just never gonna know about it until somebody gets sick.
And my biggest thing is where, where you store this food?
Correct, so, and not, prepackaged food can still make you sick, so, you know, you get recalls, things like that, so. I know a, a good number of towns, um, probably in the last week or two, far reached out and, um. A lot of us have drafted just a simple regulation that basically just says, retail food establishments will still continue to get a permit, so, if you want.
Yeah.
I'll, uh.
Can you?
I'll.
Wouldn't make sense, and we could do it here.
Yeah. Right, I'll, uh, for the next meeting, I'll, I'll have something.
At least discuss it, I should say.
Right, right.
Discuss it here, um, when is this supposed to roll out?
It already did, surprise.
Cause they were supposed to give us advi- uh, advisors on.
It was supposed to. They didn't.
Especially this, this, uh, MHOA.
Surprise. Was that about?
I'm guessing you'll hear a lot about it next week, yeah.
I think, I think it was October fifth. Uh, did you see, did you see the new?
They have a current, they have a current regulation, I mean, they have permits now, so for more.
Right, it would be going for, fortunately for us, I know a lot of towns, me included, the permit expires September first. So that's why we're scrambling, because for us, it's not till the summer, so we have time to discuss it, forget it, bring it up now, um. They also did the same, they eliminated permits for residential kitchens, um.
Oh, this doesn't make any sense, huh, it doesn't make any sense.
It, it's, they.
Do you, uh, do you guys write something up for the residential kitchen?
I haven't yet, that's my next piece, um, so. I don't know, I, I highly doubt we have many that would fall under that specific retail, but just to eliminate any, just like the tobacco, it, it just, keep it simple, so. And streamline in, in what we have going now, also with that is, uh, new food forms.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's now gonna be a three-page food form. And very unpleasant to fill in.
I've seen those.
Yeah.
They roll, they're out there?
Not yet, they just, they rolled out the new food code without a new form, they have a prototype, but, you know. So.
Leave it to the state, huh?
They just, that's what they do, they, they, they implement things or they give, uh, like mercy for panels.
Yeah.
This is what it's expected, but it's un- unfunded, it's just, um.
The new, the new forms for the.
If, if I go remind how they want you to do these things, but, uh, they don't give you the resources.
The, the new forms for the call down drills are ridiculous, fortunately we have planners, do we have Ally here? Oh, she's doing mine for me, so.
So, Ally?
Yeah.
No, they, they have, uh, we have Denny.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah, Roz does it.
Oh, you guys doing mine, no, she's doing mine for me, she felt bad. But they, they want like ten times more information than what they've required in the past on the drills, so.
Great.
That's all I got.
Uh, the only I have is.
That's not, it came out with no forms or information, right?
Of course not. So the marijuana regulations that we, uh, had, um, talked about or whatever. I don't know if you've got the one, I highlighted it in yellow, um, I, I think I was just reading it through, Roz wanted me to read it through, and I got to this one part. Where it says that, um, non-mobile locations are eligible to apply for permit, except. And then the two exceptions don't make any sense to being exceptions to the rule.
I thought we fixed that.
We fixed a lot of things, but I don't, this one here, I don't think has been fixed yet by us.
I think I gave the fix to Roz, if it didn't get done, then.
Oh, if you did, it's, it's, I don't think it's here.
I have to go back in the notes and see what we had.
But this is another one that we're, um.
This is approved, we just, we had, we haven't signed it yet, cause there were a handful of corrections that were made at the hearing.
Right, we haven't signed it yet. Right, which is, yeah, the, the per seven eleven eighteen meeting, so I mean, I don't know if I'm just not reading it right, but it just.
I thought we struck that altogether because the state wasn't allowing it.
Let me see, which one is it?
The marijuana delivery only establishments?
We, we struck the delivery, we just.
Yes, I have a mark here that we were getting rid of that.
I have to go back and. The state, the state's not allowing it right now anyway, so, it was.
Only on.
They say maybe I'm, I'm wrong, or maybe what we meant to delete, it got botched and so it's different, because it just, it didn't make sense with the exceptions.[1663.04]